Commissioners General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Thursday mornings at 9:30 at the Lorraine County Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Elaria. These are public meetings, and as always, you are invited to attend.
Would you stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under our own, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its worth.
Good morning, and welcome to the March 18th meeting of the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners. We have a resolution proclaiming the week of March 21st to 28th as tornado and flood safety awareness week in Lorraine County on behalf of the Board, and we are urging the news media and local governments of our state to assist the Ohio Committee for Severe Weather Awareness and the EM Agency in educating Ohioans on the danger of and safety measures. Alice Weber is here and will receive on behalf of the Board, of the Emergency Management Agency, and she has a couple of handouts.
My name is Alice Weber, W-E-B-B-E-R. I'm the Emergency Operations Manager for Lorraine County Emergency Management Agency. Thank you, Commissioners, for the proclamation. It's hard to believe that it's severe weather already, but severe weather is the leading cause for national threat for Lorraine County. Lorraine County has had more tornadoes and deaths in the past 80 years than any other county of Ohio. We have had three presidential disaster declarations from tornado damage in the past 15 years. March 21st through the 27th has been designated across Ohio as Severe Weather Awareness Week. This is just to draw attention to the continuing need to prepare for severe weather. I've given a couple of handouts for you, for the news media especially, hopefully you can put this in the paper for us to let people know what a warning is and what a watch is. Some people get confused with that. On the backside of that handout is about emergency preparedness disaster kits. You know, during non-emergencies, we should prepare our families in case we would have a disaster. We need to put together some kit, and on this handout, it gives you some information of what should be in that kit. And then on the other handout is about the NOAA Weather Radio. This is what we promote for severe weather alerts. We only have a few sirens in the county. Of course sirens are an outdoor alert system, so what we try to promote, and actually all the county EMAs are trying to get across to the public, is that they should purchase a NOAA Weather Radio. It's a radio that runs on batteries. It doesn't run, it's on all the time, and the only way it goes off is if we have a warning or a watch in the area. And you can program it to, if you want to hear warnings that are coming from Huron County, Erie County, Sandusky County, you can program it so that you know it's coming, or you can program it to just get Lorraine County's warnings. So you can pick it up at any electronics store. They range from the $20 range to the $40 range, depending on how sophisticated you want to get with it. So, and it just gives you a little bit of information of what that radio is. So if you can put that in the paper for us, we'd appreciate it. We hand that out at all, at the fairs, and anytime that we have a booth, we hand that information out, but just so that we get that out during this week. Also, March 24th has been designated as the statewide tornado drill. All the schools in the, in the state of Ohio will be going through a mock tornado drill. And we at the Lorraine County Emergency Management Agency, and along with our trained, sky-worn amateur radio operators, will be testing our equipment in our Emergency Operations Center, will be notifying the National Weather Service, and also the people out in the county to see how well our equipment's working. On Tuesday, March 23rd, at 6:30 PM, we're going to be sponsoring a skywarned class. And skywarned classes to teach you about the different weather, so you can be aware of spotting storms and things like that. It's going to be offered at no cost to the public. Again, that's at 6:30 Gates Auditorium, and that's at the MH Regional Medical Center. The instructor will be from the National Weather Service, and the class will last about a half an hour. Again, thank you for your support, and if you have any questions, I'll be here to answer them.
Thank you, Alice, for the good job that the Emergency Management Agency does in Lorraine County on our behalf. Madam Clerk?
Also, at 10:00 AM, Communities That Care, Elaine George is from the Executive Director of Alcohol and Drug Addiction Services, will be here to update the Board. Under Resolutions Number One, Job and Family Services Bills?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
There are no investments appropriations?
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Transfers?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
There are no advances or repayments requisitions?
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Travel expenses?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Bills?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Authorized various personnel actions as indicated on the summary sheet for employees within jurisdiction of Lorraine County Board of Commissioners?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Under the Auditor, Amendment Resolution Number 03-721 adopted September 25th, 2003, approving and entering into a sublease agreement between Lorraine County Board of Commissioners and Lorraine National Bank on behalf of Lorraine County Auditor's Office for office space of approximately 1,100 square feet located at 124 Middle Avenue, Elaria. The said amendment is to reflect authorization of the payment to be paid from account 215010301451203 Real Estate Assessment Building Rent.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Under the Community Development Department, award contract to Pogomire Design Group to assist the county with the FY 2003 CHIP Residential Rehabilitation Inspections and Administrative Services and Assistance to the county staff in the amount not to exceed $80,000. $74,000 will be paid from CHIP CDBG Funds Account 224032601450106, and $6,000 from the CHIP Home Funds Account 224042601450106.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Award contract to Kaminsky Roofing, Inc., Elaria in the amount of $5,150 for emergency home repair assistance for a roof repaired to Sandra Berkey at 15347 Wheeler Road, La Grange. There were five quotes received, this being the most responsive, and this will be paid from account 224032601450201 Emergency Home Repair Assistance.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Under Job and Family Services, approve and enter into contract between Lorraine County Department of Job and Family Services and the Firelands Community Day School, Daycare Center, Oberlin, for the child daycare services. Said contract is effective retroactive to February 1st, 2004 through December 31st, 2004. Maximum amount reimbursed is based on the state reimbursement ceilings, which are set for the age of the child and amount of the time the child attends the center. Authorize the Director of the Department of Job and Family Services to execute on behalf of the Board with Prosecutor's approval as to form.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Instruct the Clerk to advertise requests for proposals for Lorraine County Department of Job and Family Services as follows. One, for prepaid merchandise cards for school supplies and prepaid merchandise cards for school dress shoes and athletic shoes. This notice will be published in the Morning Journal on March 23rd and 30th, and bids are to be open on Tuesday, April 6th, 2004, at 1:00 PM in the Commissioner's Public Hearing Room. And two, for summer camp services for the children. This notice will be published in the Chronicle Telegram on March 23rd and 30th, and bids will be open on April 6th, 2004, at 1:30 PM in the Commissioner's Public Hearing Room.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Approve and enter into contract with CGI Information Systems and Management Consultants, Inc., to provide hardware, software, and professional services for the document imaging back filing project. This will allow Job and Family to convert a high volume of paper files to an electronic image and store them on the current document imaging system. The filing costs are 100% reimbursable through the shared cost from the consolidated allocation as follows. Hardware is in the amount of 41, excuse me, $47,155 from account 205010903440120 Computer Systems Equipment. Software, $38,340 from account 205010903440108 Computer System Software. And professional services, $48,000 from account 205010903450124 Professional Services. The state purchasing will be utilized under state term schedules to CGI at 533919-1 Highland Software, 533277-1, and Compact Computer, 533150-2. If the hardware and software are not available through the state purchasing, then the county bid process will be used at a future date.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Under the Engineer, approve and enter into subdividers agreement with Ed Gargis, developer for Bird's Nest Subdivision, Amherst Township. This is original Amherst Township lot number 57, consisting of sub lots 1 through 14 inclusive. The estimated cost is $45,139, and certificate of insurance was filed by Dawson and Reith Insurance Agency, Inc., Lorraine, Ohio.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Authorize Lorraine County to retain the services of BKB Enterprises, Inc., DBA BKB Forensic Consulting Group, Bloom Range, Ohio, as an independent contract or effective retroactive to March 1st, 2004. This is to provide expert testimony and technical advice to the county and Lorraine County Prosecutor's Office in conjunction with the Defense of Lorraine County Engineers Department in the matter of Jason Lovejoy ETAL versus Ohio Bridge Construction ETAL, Lorraine, Ohio, Court of Common Police Case Number 03CV137235. Authorize County Auditor to, to issue a retainer check in the amount of $2,100 to BKB.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Under the Sheriff, approve and addendum to the Airmark Food Service Contract to provide food service for Lorraine County Correctional Facility. The original 2002 contract contained two one-year renewal options, with the first renewal option exercised last year, and the Sheriff has again decided to renew said contract for an additional one year. This amendment will reflect the price increase by 2.2% based on the Consumer Price Index ranging from $1.484 to $1.039 per meal, depending on MA population, effective retroactive to February 1st, 2004 through January 31st, 2005.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Approve and enter into a video transmission contract between the city of Amherst, Oberlin, South Amherst, and Wellington to telecast criminal appearances from Lorraine County Correctional Facility to Oberlin Municipal Court. The participating cities will share the cost of the video transition based upon each political subdivision's percentages of usage to wit. Amherst is 24.8%, Lorraine County is 18.8%, Oberlin is 25.8%, South Amherst is 13.8%, and Wellington is 16.8%. There is a one-time hardware installation fee of $145, with a monthly telephone service life fee of $165, which allows for 2,400 minutes of transmission service. Any minutes above the amount will cost 2 cents a minute, and all costs will be proportioned based upon the above usages percentages and will be adjusted annually. The contract contains a non-iba cancellation clause.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Mr. Cortez County Minister?
How about no reports or comments this morning? Thank you.
Acting County Prosecutor, Mr. Ernest?
I would request a brief executive session with the Commissioners regarding pending litigation over a matter with, uh, our Jobs and Family Services Department. Should be brief.
Commissioners report?
Commissioner's report? Um, nah, that'd be nice. That'd be nice to get. I had a little chat today, and she's missing right now, and I think she'll turn up after the meeting, so. I'll try not to get emotional. I know, she's been kidnapped, and I'm gonna allow it because, you know, I think we, we've tracked down where this person's missing, so.
On a more serious note, I would like to announce the District 9 Natural Resources Assistance Council, EnRAC, which covers three counties here in Lorraine and Medina, are announcing the round three applications for the 2004 allocation of the Clean Ohio Conservation Fund Green Space Program. EnRAC is responsible for the local review of applications and preliminary approval for the distribution of funds allocated to District 9 by the State of Ohio to this program. The allocation has not yet been released by the state legislature, however, the council has agreed to begin accepting and evaluating applications to be prepared to proceed when money is released. Application requirements can be obtained from Joyce Parks, my administrative assistant, and this is available to political subdivisions and nonprofit corporations, and it was very beneficial to Lorraine County in the last year, and we hope that we'll have applications that can duplicate that this year. The website, if you need information, is www.pwc.state.oh.us. Thank you. That concludes my report. Old business?
None.
None. New business?
None.
Or correspondence?
No.
Second. Ms. Blair?
With a note on item number five, Thursday in Pittsfield Township, they're holding an open house and community meeting on the west branch of the Black River watershed. The purpose is to bring the community together to discuss environmental concerns with the Black River watershed, and this is a program that we have worked with Mr. Twining's office on. Did you want to say anything further about that, Ron?
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Okay. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
A copy of the morning.
Public comment?
Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the Board?
About Lieutenant Clyde.
She's not here yet.
Yeah, she's here.
Okay. Elaine, are you, are you ready to, to? Good morning.
Anne Durry, our facilitator, will be handing some handouts of our presentation. I just wanted to update you with a quiet momentum that's growing in Lorraine County, and it's called Lorraine County Communities That Care. We're in a mid-year status of our planning phase, and I kinda wanted to set you up with where we've been and where we're going with this. In July of 2003, the Alcohol and Drug Addiction Services Board of Lorraine County received a state incentive grant from the Ohio Department of Alcohol and Drug Addiction Services, a three-year grant, which was $127,000 per year for three years. The purpose of the grant is the first year to do planning, and then the second and third year is to implement science-based approaches for prevention services in Lorraine County. When we got the grant as the Board, we looked at some options nationally, and we selected Channing Bait, a Communities That Care planning process, and a few of the reasons we selected it were really important. They use prevention science research to promote positive youth development and prevent youth behavior problems. It also provides local control and flexibility to help maintain support for the process. It matches a local profile of risk and protective factors to tested effective policies, programs, and practices, and it focuses on outcomes to ensure the accountability for our resources. We also like Communities That Care because it's inclusive, collaborative, proactive, based on research, and it's community-specific. In Lorraine County, we're gonna use our county data from community profiles to develop a long-range community plan, and then we'll go to choose tested, effective programs for The goals are to organize and involve all community members who have a stake in the healthy futures of young people. We're going to set priorities for action, strengthen our funding applications, define clear, measurable outcomes, select tested, effective programs, policies, and practices, and then evaluate our progress. We know nationally that 63.9% of youth reported trying cigarette smoking, 42% of youth reported smoking marijuana, 78% of youth reported using alcohol. When we look at our youth survey, we're gonna find out what's happening with our youth in our communities, so we can address the problems locally. Communities That Care is a process that we look to the Center for Substance Abuse Prevention in Washington and to see who they recommend, and there are two gurus, Dr. David Hawkins and Dr. Richard Catalano, who work with the Social Development and Research Group at the University of Washington, and they really help guide this process, so it's not just a fly-by-night process, it has research behind it, and it can be afforded us to be localized to do what we need to do here, so it's got some moldability. They look at what's called a social development strategy approach, and the goal is healthy behaviors for all children and youth. And you start with healthy beliefs and clear standards for families, schools, communities, and the peer groups. You then go by building bonding, attachment, and commitment to the families, again, schools, communities, and peer groups, and you do that by providing opportunities, you provide skills, and you provide recognition to these groups, and that will help nurture individual characteristics. That's kind of the basis for the strategy. It uses a public health model, where first you define the problem, you identify the factors of risk and protection, you look at interventions, and then you implement programs, and then you evaluate. So it's a holistic model that we're working with. Risk factors, they exist in all areas of influence. They, they exist in the community, they exist in the family, they exist in schools, they exist with peers and individuals. They're predictors of multiple behaviors, such as substance abuse, teen pregnancy, violence, school dropout, and delinquency. So if one risk factor, it may go across the board. An example would be the availability of drugs. Obviously, behavior of substance abuse and violence can be correlated if there's availability of drugs for the youth. Back in November, we convened a key leader orientation, and we had 66 key leaders representing the diverse community, and that began our local process. The representation included county, school, social services, school, school youth, law enforcement, ministerial groups, and individuals. Their role will be to hold the community board accountable. They will work with us, which they already have, to build school district support for the youth survey, provide access to community resources and information, and then support the implementation that we'll be building in the summer of the community board. In January 2004, a community board was formed, and one of your staff, Janice Mokosh, is being very wonderful to help us on that, so we've got a good connection. 23 of the key leaders came on board for that board, and then an additional 21 persons from around the county is on our boards. We've got about 43 people that are interested to the commitment. We drafted a vision statement, and the vision statement is, "Lorraine County will be supportive and connected with a strong, positive network of family, home, school, and communities committed to the success of its children." This board, it will be responsible for developing and maintaining effective communication, both within the board, with the key leaders, and to the community. They will be charged to design a three-to-five-year community action plan, develop an evaluation plan, work with the key leaders to identify and secure resources, and reassess problem behaviors of risk and protective factors as we move along. We've got work groups, we've got a board overall work group, a group that's gonna look at resources in the community, a group that's looking at the risk and protective factor data of our youth. We've got a group that involves youth unbelievably, the youth are so energized to be part of this. We'll develop a funding work group, and we have built a community outreach and public relations committee. We're valuing youth involvement at all levels, with the community board membership to help us with the data collection interpretation, with public relations, and we're gonna work with them on program planning and development, because we know if we as adults think we know it's working with these kids and we don't have their input, we're not gonna get the reception, so we already have a good swelling of momentum from our youth. We have as part of our grant a local facilitator. Her name is Anne Durry. She actually works with Catholic charity services, but she's kind of our conduit between the key leaders and the community board. She's there for staff support, she is the conduit for all of the community board events, and she's really the documenter of the Communities That Care effort, and I wanted to bring her up for a minute and talk about the youth surveys, and then answer any questions for you.
And you, please give your name and spell it.
My name is Anne Durry, A-N-N-E-D-U-R-Y.
Thank you.
And I'm the local facilitator for the state incentive grant at the Alcohol and Drug Addiction Services Board. Good morning. I just wanted to briefly update you regarding the youth surveys. The youth surveys, we, in Lorraine County, we have surveyed 11,006, 8th, and 10th grade students in the entire county at all districts. We did that in November and December of this year. It was a very energetic process to get all of those surveys completed. Once the surveys were completed, they were forwarded to the Channing Bait Company, which is part of our connection to the Communities That Care process. They will be evaluating those surveys and returning to us reports that will profile each of those districts and communities. When I say profile, I mean that those areas of risk that Elaine spoke about will be illuminated in each of those reports. The reports are gonna come back to us as district subreports, so each school district will receive a subreport that will profile their school data for their 6th, 8th, and 10th grade students, and those areas or hotspots will be illuminated, and we'll start to look at those and assess what, which programs, that are national model programs that are endorsed by Center for Substance Abuse Prevention and SAMSA, and we will begin to work towards implementing those prevention programs matching to those risk factors in those communities. The Alcohol and Drug Addiction Services Board will also receive a comprehensive report that will give us all of the profile data in Lorraine County, so we'll be able to look at our county as a whole in terms of how our youth responded to those surveys, what they're reporting, and those categories are alcohol and drug use, but as well also community attitude, attitude about school, feeling safe in their neighborhoods, having persons that they connect to at their home, in their school, in their neighborhood, also gang involvement, violence activities, et cetera. So we'll be able to look at, at what youth are doing in our county holistically, and then be able to approach that and target some prevention efforts. What we're doing, we're in the process now, our community board has decided they would like to move forward and gain endorsements from as many key leaders and key organizations in the county. That's part of the reason why we're here today. We would really like the Commissioners to give their stamp of approval and say, yes, this is something that we support in our county, and giving us that kind of support. So I would ask the Commissioners if, if you would please review the information, the packets that we gave you, and then indicate whether or not at some point you would like to endorse this as a process. We'd also like to continue to provide updates through the Commissioners as far as how our county is looking once those results come back. We expect those survey results to be back at the early part of next month in April. At that point, we will meet with the school district heads and conduct a training as to how to read that data, how to release that data, and, and how to move forward with the data in terms of program implementation.
Thank you, Anne.
Thank you.
Are there any questions or comments? I believe she asked for resolution support from the Commissioners. Oh, Shirley's coming.
Shirley R. Johnson, Oberlin, I'd like to have a little more explanation about how this data, the survey data was gotten, and how the confidentiality and privacy of the individuals whom it was gotten is protected.
That's a really good question. The survey is completely confidential. Children that, that took the survey were, it was administered by the teachers in the classrooms for those specific grades, 6th, 8th, and 10th grade. They were, they anonymously completed the survey, there were no markings or no indication as to what their name was. They were simply given instructions by the teacher in that particular classroom. At the end of the survey, they were, they took their survey to a table and placed it into an envelope, which was at that time sealed and only marked with the school's name and the grade. The surveys are rigorously tested and have been proven to be effective nationally. In fact, there's a national database that has several hundreds of thousands of children across the nation that have already taken the survey. As part of this process, when we receive our results for Lorraine County, we will be able to match that to that national database and look at, compare how our youth in our county match up with those nationally, so that's definitely an advantage for us.
And Elaine?
Also, as Elaine just reminded me, the, we used a tool called a passive consent form when students were taking the, the survey. That passive- That passive consent was administered by each school district. It was sent home to parents indicating that the survey would be administered and what the contents of the survey would be concerning. And the parents had the right to say yea or nay, whether or not they wanted their children to participate in the survey process. If a parent responded and said, "No, I do not want my child to partake in that survey," the child did not complete the survey. We had very few, I think in the whole county, there were only three or four children who actually did not participate, which gave us our high numbers.
What was the total, what's the total number of children in the school systems in that you? What's the total number of school children?
11,000 children.
That's how many you contacted.
Completed the survey.
Right, how many was the total in the schools, so I can know what the percentage of people that completed? You may have had three or four parents that didn't want to do it, but there's a lot of people that just don't even send the survey back.
You want to know how many returned surveys you had?
No, I already know that, I just want to know how many, if there's 11,000 people or children, then was there 20,000 children in schools?
The survey's concerning sixth, eighth, and 10th grade students only, and I don't have that figure off the top of my head. I can get that information to you.
Okay, I appreciate that. And why are you asking for support? What kind of support? Why would you need that?
We're looking for, the outreach work group is really looking for recognition and ways to build the momentum out to other community systems to talk about what this is about and to point to key, key leaders. They've targeted government, they've targeted law enforcement, social services, schools, and ministerial functions to be able to say, again, as representations of the community, these pockets of people, these systems that they represent are supportive of this to help us keep the momentum going. We've already received an endorsement from the superintendents of all the schools through their superintendent's group, and maybe Janice, can you talk about the outreach work group for a minute? Or do you have a?
No.
She's the chair of the outreach work group, actually.
Well, that's fine, but you didn't answer what?
I'd like to let her talk, because the outreach group is really the group that charged the endorsement request.
Okay, okay.
This is Janice Mokosh, who is on our staff.
I'm Janice Mokosh, and I work for the Lorraine County Commissioners. I am the chairperson of the outreach group. There are various work groups. Basically, right now, as far as endorsements, we have the Lorraine County, or excuse me, Lorraine and Elyria Ministerial Alliances have endorsed what we are doing as far as Communities That Care project. We also have, we have all the superintendents of Lorraine County who've endorsed it. I'm trying to think if there's anybody else. Elaine is working on the social services end of it, so that's still in the works right now. And I haven't heard from law enforcement, I'm not sure if anybody's approached you regarding that.
I think that's a plea for sure, Stamatte.
Not as of yet, but I knew this program was going on, and it's an excellent program. And I know my Captain Resenda and a couple of my other officers have been involved in it, so. But I think all they're looking for is basically some support. As a Chiefs Association, we're going to look at it and probably give them a letter of support for that.
Commissioners, we've been supporting this program. Elaine was here earlier, she made a presentation on the key leaderships. I attended their symposiums, and we requested that Ms. Mokosh represent us. We've been given meeting rooms and space and support to further the goals of this program. It's an excellent program.
Thank you.
Is it more of an informational program? It's not basically coming in to implement policy into other school districts, or is it more of a, you guys are just big, it sounds like what I've been hearing right now, and I support the group, it's a great cause, okay, but what I'm not hearing, I guess something's missing, and I'm hearing big-picture comments, but I'm not hearing, is there an end game here? What are you guys looking to accomplish?
The end game is to, once we see what the survey results are.
Correct.
And we assess what our current resources is in terms of what programs in this community can maybe address these programs and the needs for these youth and their families, the group is going to come up with a long-range plan specific to the county, and it might say, we need to take, for example, let's say the Boys and Girls Club. If that's an effective program that might address some of the risk factors, and if it only targets children in southern Lorraine County, we're going to see as a group how maybe we can expand that to the whole Lorraine County. And so we're going to develop a plan. We're still in our planning year, and you're free to keep listening to us because we're still getting the data, we're still assessing. Probably in late summer, we'll really pull together a three-year plan, and if you'd like to, you can wait until then to really see in the next three years what we're visioning this whole piece to look like, because we're still, again, without knowing what our data shows, we don't want to just put up a balloon and say, we want to do this, until we really know what the use of alcohol, tobacco, and other drug of our youth and their beliefs and the community norms about that are for Lorraine County. We're not just going to put a program in just to say we've done that.
Yeah, okay, it's all, I mean, if the data that you're collecting is going to be community-specific, that'd be great, because if you're looking, I'd hate to see certain communities have a, every community has their own issues, and I'd hate to see certain issues be implemented in areas that...
Absolutely, and that's why the sub-district ports for each school district are critical for each community to also look at themselves.
Okay, so your data on the 11,000 kids, and it is, is it community-specific, or is it just, did you guys just gather them all up and throw them in a pile, or community-specific?
No, it'll, it'll target the school system.
Okay, the system itself?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, well, that's good. I guess that's what I was kind of getting, I was, I was hearing big-picture stuff, and I was kind of like, wait.
We're pulling the whole picture together.
Well, that's fine, that's fine. And you just would like a letter of support to continue with your, the great work you're doing?
If you could do that, that would be wonderful.
I'll support that.
And I'll second that support.
Any further discussion? Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming in and putting up with me.
Anyone else that wishes to address the board? If not, I will move that we go into executive session.
I'll second.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Thursday mornings at 9:30 at the Lorraine County Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, fourth floor, downtown Elyria. These are public meetings, and as always, you are invited to attend.